Josh.
I'm here.
Yeah, that's you.
That's you. Joseph, how are you?
Oh, pretty good.
How's the fishing business?
Greetings.
Picked up today. It's nice out there. Calm, no wind.
No wind today?
No wind right now.
There was some on the north side.
Well, I stay on the south side.
Okay, it's six thirty and I think we have a forum here. Robin, I'm not sure if you have a forum on the planning work to week?
I don't know as of right now. I, who do we have? We've got John, we got me, Sheila said she's gonna join, Patrick said he would join. We will have a forum. Why don't we get started and...
Okay, well, we'll get started then. By the time we get to boat, we'll have a call. Okay, I'm gonna open the the drink meeting of the Board of Selectmen, Board of Health in the planning board Wednesday, August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three at six thirty. Let's see, opening comments here, a few announcements here. Two thousand twenty-three resident parking stickers are now available for purchase at Nahad Park and Stickers at ten dollars each. All outstanding bills must be paid. The town census must be completed. The outpost area is open on Wednesdays and Saturdays from nine to three, two thousand twenty-three. Resident parking stickers required. Visit the public works page at thehahad.org for a full list of acceptable material, recycling for metal, white goods, TVs, computers. Last Saturday of each month until October twenty-eighth from eight to twelve behind the DPW garage on Flash Road. President stickers required. Visit the public works department at nahad.org for acceptable materials. Sit fees may apply. And finally, Market by the Sea, formerly Nahad Farmers Market, Saturday, Saturday is ten AM to one PM at Flash Road. August nineteenth, September sixteenth, and October fourteenth for more information on becoming vendor. Visit the market page at Nahad.org or contact Kate Taylor at Nahad.org. Josh, you have anything in opening comments?
Um, I just wanted to mention that Kings Beach closures have been in the news a lot in the Lind item. This is something that's been going on for decades and it's pretty disgraceful. Hopefully, Lind's Moms got to get their act together and take care of that. But mainly, I wanted to point out that Nahad has no combined stormwater in sewage pipes. Those are completely separate systems. So we don't run into the problem of dumping sewage during storms. So brought to my attention that some people didn't know that, so I just thought I'd mention that. And, and then secondly, I just wanted to take a moment to remember Lisa Gallagher Arena. Loved the hot city, passed away far too young. Condolences to Charlie and her kids. And I also sadly saw in last night's item that Charlie's mother passed away. So difficult time for, for the arena family. So there are our thoughts.
Thank you, Josh. Jay, any opening comments?
No, just to carry on where Josh left off on the combined storage outfalls. Aren't there three or four combined storage outfalls in Lind Harbor on the westerly side in the hat?
I don't believe they're combined. They do have an overflow system that's activated at times, Gene. At the little water sewer when the treatment plant can't handle the flows. So my understanding is that the treatment plant is tertiary treatment. If they get the heavy flows, they have to release before the third treatment. They generally chlorinate first. But then but then discharge before it's completely treated. So there are times of heavy rain where there's overflow, little water sewer treatment plant can't handle the flow. Little water sewer treatment plant can't handle the flows and they discharge before full treatment.
Yeah, there were, there were a couple of times where it got pretty nasty over there, but it seemed to clear up, clean up real quick. But it just, it's a question. Thanks for the uh, the info.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Yeah, there's one. You, I think you, I think you, I don't know if you said that, but there's one, as you mentioned. And then I just wanted to echo Josh's comments. Lisa worked here at the town hall for many years. And, you know, unfortunately had to stop working because of her diagnosis. And, you know, she'll be sincerely missed. She was a um, just a joyful, supportive member of the team. And um, you know, it's, it's a sad, sad to see her go and thoughts are with her family. So I appreciate Josh mentioning that. Um, and then I also just, I forgot to add to the agenda, just the announcement that the Barefoot Black Tie event is this Saturday, August nineteenth, from six to eleven o'clock on Shore Beach. There'll be dancing, food provided by Brett Henry Catering, a cash bar. And tickets are a hundred dollars a ticket. It's a fundraiser for the Council on Aging. And hopefully, it's a sold out event.
I look forward to that. Sounds like it looks like we have some good weather for that on Friday night, hopefully, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Uh, I, I would like to let you know that we have a quorum. Patrick O'Reilly can attend. He's um, coming down from Maine and Steve Viviano also can attend, but we do have four members and can proceed on the nominations. Thank you.
Okay, let's get on with that. Then we have a few appointments. So these are nominations, Tony, right? These are just joint appointments?
That's correct. Um, I uh, there's, when we have a bylaw here in town that when an elected position becomes vacant, that a joint vote of the Board of Selectmen and the Border Committee with the vacant position votes to appoint someone into that role. They fill that role until the following election, which will be in April of next year. And I believe Chairman Steinberg has some other comments as well regarding the upcoming votes before you get into them.
Uh, so Tony, I don't believe we nominated these people officially in our last meeting. We voted to recommend to nominate. So should we first uh, take any comments on nominating and vote on nominating and then vote to appoint?
In my discussions with Dan Scrip, who's here, because it's fairly straightforward and it's one member per position. A nomination doesn't really need to be, doesn't really need to happen, but Dan, fill in for me.
Yeah, they're unopposed positions. It's only one position, one proposition. So I don't think that we really need the nominations. I mean, it doesn't hurt to have them, but I think it's a preference at this point.
Okay, well, we'll just proceed to the appoint, to the appointment. Michelle Cappano is highly recommended by the planning board. Uh, she has been very diligent, made enormous contributions to the planning board. And uh, we are very pleased with the work she has done and happy to have her appointed if we so vote. Rebecca Flaca is, some of you may not know her. She is a medical doctor. Her husband is also a medical doctor. Uh, they live uh, on the hot road across from Town Hall. They're natives of Germany. And she was very involved in providing input on short-term housing and a very intelligent woman who I know and I can highly recommend her for the alternate position and the planning board thought she would be an excellent person for that position. And then we would move to reappoint Jimmy Dolan as the other alternate member. So if there are no questions or other comments, I could proceed to make a motion with respect to the open member position. I moved to appoint Michelle Cappano to the open seat on the planning board effective August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, with the term expiring April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Do, does anyone on the planning board want to move to appoint Michelle? And then we'll do the board of selectmen segment, second, if that's okay with you, Mark?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead. Does someone want to move on the planning board? And who was that?
That was me, Mr. Chairman.
Shannon, okay. And, and do we have a second? All right. And the vote is as follows. Patrick O'Reilly, not present. Shannon Bianchi.
Yes.
Steve Viviano, not present. Sheila Hamilton.
Yes.
John Stabile. Johnny there?
Yes.
Okay. And then Rob Steinberg, yes. Next appointment.
Well, hold on a second. Let's have the Board of Selectmen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
That's okay.
Move that the Board of Selectmen nominate Michelle Cappano for the open seat on the planning board.
Second.
It's not nominate, it's appoint.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I moved the Board of Selectmen appoint Michelle Cappano for the open seat on the planning board.
With the term expiring, uh, April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four. We have a second on that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded in discussion on the motion. Seeing, hearing none. Josh?
Josh, enter mine.
Jean, can't the eye?
My color and I.
And, and just before, before you move on, if I can interrupt, I just would like to give a shout out to Cal Hastings, the, which is the vacant seat that Michelle is filling, who's served the board for many, many years. Um, and, you know, I'm very grateful to, to have worked with them over the last few.
And, and Tony, I'm grateful as well. Cal is very dependable there every, every time we have a meeting and served for probably over twenty years, maybe more, and just did a tremendous job. And we thank Cal on behalf of the planning board. I thank Cal for his service. So I will now uh, move to appoint Rebecca Flaca to the alternate position on the planning board effective August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, with a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Do we have somebody who wants to uh, make that motion? I mean, uh,
I'll move that motion.
Move that motion. And do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Um, and we now have the roll call vote of the planning board. So um, starting with Patrick O'Reilly, not present. Shannon Bianchi.
Yes.
Steve Viviano, not present. Sheila Hamilton.
Yes.
Uh, John Stabile.
Yes.
And Rob Steinberg is a yes. All right, over to you, Mark.
Uh, I moved the Board for a selectman vote to appoint Rebecca Flaca to the alternate position on the planning board effective August fifteenth, two thousand twenty.
Three.
Four.
Three, three.
Twenty twenty-three with the term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I do have one quick question. So the alternate terms run from June thirtieth to June thirtieth?
The, uh, yes, and actually Rebecca's, now that Michelle has been appointed to fill the remaining term of Cal's position, Rebecca's being appointed to fill the remaining term of Michelle's.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the, you know, the, the planning board is elected, so those, those expire at the time of town election. But the, the, the alternates are appointed and, and appointed. Uh, June thirtieth, end of fiscal year, yeah.
Their terms are on the fiscal year, yep.
I just wanted to understand that date difference.
Any further discussion, motion? Seeing here and none.
Josh, enter mine.
Jean, can't the eye?
My color and I. Okay, we have another appointment here, I believe, right?
Okay, um, I asked for a motion to reappoint James Dolan as an alternate member of the planning board effective July first, two thousand twenty-three, with a term, end term of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Does someone want to move?
Go moved.
And do I have a second?
A second.
All right, thank you. Um, roll call vote. Patrick O'Reilly, not present. Shannon Bianchi.
Yes.
Steve Viviano, not present. Sheila Hamilton.
Yes.
John Stabile.
Yes.
And Rob Steinberg, yes. So I believe that can, I, I pass it over to you. Have no further motions to move at this time.
Thank you, Rob.
Uh, I'll make a motion. Uh, I'm moving the board to select.
Wait, wait. Josh, do I need to adjourn the planning board meeting?
Well, just let the Selectmen do their motion on the reappointment of, of.
Oh, right. I'm, I'm sorry.
Uh, I moved the Board of Selectmen vote to reappoint James Dolan as an alternate member of planning board effective July first, two thousand twenty-three, with a term ending date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor?
Josh, enter mine.
Jean, can't the eye?
My color and I. Go ahead, Rob.
All right, um, thank you, Board of Selectmen, for allowing us to be part of this meeting today and for holding the joint meeting today so promptly. Uh, with that said, I asked for a motion to adjourn the planning board meeting. And that was moved by Shannon?
Yes.
Seconded by?
I'll second it. Sheila Hamilton.
Okay, I'll call the vote. Uh, Patrick O'Reilly, not present. Shannon Bianchi.
Yes.
Steve Viviano, not present. Sheila Hamilton.
Yes.
John Stabile.
Yes.
Rob Steinberg. Yes. So, uh, thank you very much, Board of Selectmen and the planning board who was able to attend today.
Thank you, Rob, and thank you for the planning board. Uh, thank you for the uh, the newly appointed members. Thanks for, thanks for participating.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm out of town, so I've gotta hop off and get back to work here. Thank you so much. Bye.
Thanks, Rob. Uh, okay, we have new business. We have some event requests to approve here.
Can do that. And move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the following event requests. Nahad Village Church Community Yard Sale on Saturday, August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, from ten AM to three PM. And the Second Annual Nahad Firefighters Association Local Twenty-seven Eighteen Charitable Cornhole Tournament on Saturday, October seventh, two thousand twenty-three, starting at one o'clock PM at Flash Road Park.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Uh, any discussion? These are events that have happened each year, so I look forward to uh, joining them. I know the Village Church is planning a, a very big yard sale, so I'm hoping that people can, can, can come up and anticipate. Looks like a good day, so. Any further discussion on the motions?
So Saturday, we have that, that Village Church Yard Sale and the um, Farmers Market, same, same day on Saturday.
Yeah. Okay, any further discussion?
No.
Seeing, hearing none, all in favor?
Josh, enter mine.
Jean, can't the eye?
My color and I. There was some minutes to approve, Josh?
Yep, I moved the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from May third, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussions on the motions?
No.
Seeing, hearing none, all in favor?
Josh, enter mine.
Jean, can't the eye?
My color and I. Um, ongoing business. Uh, are we gonna bring this up tonight? Um, Tony, are we gonna put this off to our next meeting?
We're gonna, we're gonna take this up at the next meeting, October sixth. Um, there's no issue. It's just, we, I didn't have enough time to kind of prepare some of the background information for you. And uh, so we're, it's, it's not urgent, but uh, we'll be taking it up on the next meeting.
Okay, this is in regards to the Kelly Green Golf Course lease that needs to be extended. So can we make sure, Tony, at that next meeting, that members of the golf course committee are present?
Yep, Eric, Eric Green, the chairman, and, and Brett from the golf course, we're both gonna be on Brett Waterman. We're gonna be on the call tonight. And I, I let them know that we planned to bump it to the next meeting and they had no issue with that.
Okay, sounds great. Jane?
No, no comments.
Okay, great. Okay, ongoing business, trash rates and billing, composting pilot program, Tony?
All right, so um, as we've talked over the last couple of months here at the Board of Selectmen meeting, you know, one of the goals of the town has been, you know, trying to combat the rising costs of waste services, trash collection, curbside collection for the residents in town. Unfortunately, you know, the costs nationwide have spiked significantly. And every year, we're seeing a four percent increase on our curbside collection costs. So we've, you know, really tried to find ways to make that more palatable, make it more equitable, and attempt to reduce it as best as we possibly can. Um, this year, uh, you know, we need to raise about six hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars in trash fees. Um, last year, a residential rate was around three hundred and eighty dollars, and right now, we're estimating it to be closer to about four hundred dollars. Um, so, you know, we are, where we've been looking at our billing system. And one, one change that we implemented last year was we included the trash fee with residents' first water sewer bill of the fiscal year. Uh, attempting to, uh, you know, make it one less billing cycle to have to process. Uh, but because that fee is so significant now, we had a lot of feedback from residents about, you know, how that, that one bill with all three charges combined was, was, um, was difficult for people. So what we're, what we're looking to do this year is actually divide it into three equal payments and attach that to each one of the water sewer bills. So spreading it out over the year will make it a little bit more palatable for the residents, I think. And we're also looking at ways to reduce our costs, which is gonna be in the form of tonnage. So we've spent a lot of time on um, how do we reduce tonnage in the waste stream? And one of the best ways to do that is to incentivize composting. We talked about that a few meetings ago, um, and we've met with uh, members of the community. We, we spoke with members from SWIM. We've been on a few calls, Mark. I know you've been on them too with um, the regional coordinator from DEP. We've talked to, you know, waste management and even um, black earth composting. About seventy people in the town are currently signed up with black earth composting. Uh, if, if a hundred red uh, households sign up with black earth composting, it would produce a thirty percent reduction in the cost per household. So whatever the fee is for month to month or six month or one year membership, it would be reduced by thirty percent if we get another thirty members signed up. Um, so additionally, the environmental impacts of composting are significant. The um, maintenance impacts to the, to our sewer system and your home sewer system and garbage disposal are beneficial. sewer system and garbage disposal, um, are, uh, beneficial. But it also, by pulling food waste, which is the heaviest part of what you put out at the curb, uh, it's gonna provide a benefit in reduction on tonnage, which is how, in part, how we're billed as a community. And then, of course, uh, a- as you know, and as we'll talk about in the next part of the meeting here, um, with wildlife concerns in the town, removing that food source out of the waste stream would be, uh, would help us in ways in with that effort as well. Uh, so the town has, uh, looked into, um, producing an optional, uh, pilot program incentivizing residents to join Black Earth composting. And we're, what we are hoping, you know, to announce very soon by way of a mailer, uh, to all residents and with the help of SWIM is a, um, first year, new customer, first year reimbursement for, uh, joining Black Earth composting. So if you sign up for a full year with Black Earth composting and get, uh, we looked at the different starter kits that are included in that. Um, there's the, the highest level of starter kit, uh, included in that. It would run you about two hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, if you do that and submit, um, your, uh, receipt through this pilot program, the town will reimburse you completely for that cost. Uh, so you, you did essentially get, uh, your first year completely free. Um, and you also, by being a Black Earth customer, you're also eligible for a twenty-dollar rebate on your trash fee from the town. Uh, so that's the overall concept. Uh, we're working out the fine print and advertising of the program, uh, but hope to be, you know, sending that out and formalizing it in the, in the coming weeks.
Tony, could you give a simple overview of how Black Earth works?
It's a curbside collection on a weekly basis. Uh, so the starter kit would provide you a, uh, bin that you put on the curb. Um, and a number of, uh, compostable bags that you can put your food waste into the bags and then put them on the curb side, into the curbside bin, and it would come, they come to your house and collect it right from the curb.
Great, thank you.
Tony, um, you did a great job explaining this, and, uh, I'm a big advocate of this program. I totally participated in it, and my only regret is I wish I started it earlier than I did. Uh, it, 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 it's terrific. Um, there were two, uh, Black Earth containers, one's a thirty-five watt one, the other one, I think it's a swallow on ten quads, so depending on your family size, uh, you could, you could choose. There is an initial cost for the container. Uh, I'm not sure if we're gonna be a brist at, Tony, are we?
Yeah, that, that, I looked at the, the larger bin and that starter pack, and that that's what totaled around two hundred and sixty dollars with the one year plus that larger starter kit.
So this is great.
People the option if, if, uh, you know, if people prefer to have a smaller bin because they're not gonna compost as much, obviously, you know, our, our hope is to incentivize as much composting as possible, so we went with the larger, uh, package. Um, but those details are still, you know, we can, we can make some adjustments, you know, if that's more of a um, a family size type preference. And I, and lastly, I also failed to mention that, you know, this, this pilot program would be completely funded with ARPA funds, that we still have some funds that need to be spent by, uh, twenty twenty-five, I believe, so. Um, it wouldn't, you know, this program would not cost, come from the taxpayer, uh, general fund. It would be funded through ARPA.
Uh, great, Tony. Um, again, uh, I think this is a great opportunity for people to get involved with this. In addition to all of the, uh, benefits that Tony highlighted, the environmental benefits, uh, wildlife issues in terms of getting into your trash in the middle of the night, uh, wastewater collection system, because we're not disposing, uh, garbage disposal, you know, thirty-five pounds a week of garbage. Uh, so I mean, these are all great incentives for people to get involved. So, uh, hopefully, we can put this program together. In, in addition, yeah, I mean, if we're looking at, um, we'll put the numbers together, Tony, but the tonnage each year, if everybody participated in this, uh, uh, ultimate goal, uh, could significantly reduce our, uh, rubbish, uh, trash fees on annual basis, so. Hopefully, we're gonna fly out and get it to everybody, and people can take a serious look at this, and hopefully, they'll participate.
Hey, uh, Tony, thank you, Mike. Uh, Tony, on the trash side of things, uh, are we still looking at uniform trash barrels?
That's another, that's definitely another concept that we're considering and using the remaining amount of ARPA funds with. Uh, we're starting with this, but yeah, that's something that we have explored. Um, utilizing ARPA funds to purchase barrels to provide to residents. Um, what that could provide to the town in a financial savings, which ultimately could result in better trash rates in the future, is, uh, a reduction in labor costs for waste management. You know, if we have all uniform barrels, um, they can uh, run the route with automated collection trucks, which saves them time and ultimately, you know, costs them less, which costs us less. So by reducing tonnage and by speeding up the process by which it's collected, it puts us in a position for better, uh, contract rates in the future. And hopefully, you know, flattening out that four percent increase that we're currently experiencing every year.
Is that in the near future?
Um, it could, it can be. It's something that we're, we've, we've talked about in the last couple of meetings. Uh, we, we kind of said, let's focus on the composting pilot program first. Um, and that's definitely the next step for us to have a discussion on that.
I'm just wondering, because my trash barrel is wearing out.
Uh, all right, well, we'll get on it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Uh, Josh, any comments on this?
Uh, no, sounds like a, sounds like a good idea.
Right, uh, I want to thank, um, SWIM and all of their members who have been helping us along this process, so it's been very helpful. So it's a great segue into, uh, rodent, uh, management presentation by, uh, uh, public health interns, uh, Meredith Thibodeau and, uh, and, and John Kuan, uh, because I think, uh, John and Meredith, you could probably comment on how beneficial, um, a waste reduction program would be in a, a stream, so go ahead.
Which one of us do you want first, Mark?
Uh, Tony, you have this. I know.
Um, yeah, so John, our, uh, John was able to secure, uh, a DPH grant that allowed us, um, to uh, fund an intern position, and Meredith, uh, Thibodeau's been, you know, working with the town over the summer. She actually completed her internship uh, last week, and, um, you know, really used the opportunity to conduct a uh, case study, I would call it, um, on rodent control and looking at what neighboring communities, uh, employ and what, um, you know, standard practices, uh, and how they are, you know, can be good or bad or, or, or unknown. Um, and she um, put together a, uh, a presentation of her work that I'm gonna let her present uh, in a moment, but John, do you have anything else to add?
I would like to add that, uh, Meredith is a master's degree candidate in public health with Southern New Hampshire University, and, uh, we came, uh, by her internship through the Massachusetts Health Officers Association in cooperation with the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. Uh, Meredith has not only presented, uh, this, uh, PowerPoint to, uh, Tony, uh, this past week, but, uh, uh, earlier today, uh, Meredith, uh, was to present this, uh, to the, uh, Massachusetts Department of Public Health Summer Intern, uh, Project, uh, uh, which was being held at the State Labs in Jamaica Plain. Uh, I've certainly seen it, uh, several times. I've seen it grow from an idea, and, uh, uh, if this were stand-up comedy, I would say, uh, Meredith has a solid twelve to present to you tonight. Would, would you agree, Meredith?
I'm not sure I would go that far.
I'm, I'm gonna hand it over to you, to you, Meredith.
All right, uh, thank you for having me tonight. Um, as John said, I am Meredith Thibodeau. I'm a master's of public health candidate, uh, with a concentration in global health studies. Uh, I've been in Nahat this summer and have just been so inspired and awed by all I've seen and all I've learned. Um, so I'm happy to share my presentation with you. Um, if you just bear with me, I will attempt to share my.
I got it. I, I haven't shared, Meredith, so just let me know. Uh, can you see it?
Uh, I can see it. I can see it. I did make some modifications to it this afternoon.
Yeah, this is the one he's done, uh, like a couple hours ago.
Okay. All right, uh, so you just want me to tell you when to click?
Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, my summer internship project was on rodent management survey and practices, um, in Nahat and the surrounding communities. So go ahead and click. Uh, rodent management is globally a widespread health and economic concern. There are approximately fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred rodent species worldwide who inhabit every continent except for Antarctica. Rodents are known to be direct and indirect carriers of over thirty-one diseases, including hantavirus, hemorrhagic fever, leptospirosis, and rat bite fever, among others, um, which can spread to people through direct contact, breathing contaminated air, uh, touching contaminated surfaces, being bitten, scratched, or eating contaminated food. Rodents harbor ticks, mites, and fleas that can act as vectors to spread diseases between rodents and people, and they can cause property damages and electrical fires by chewing through building materials and wiring and cause significant crop damage and losses. According to the World Health Organization and the Food and Agricultural Organization, rodents consume and destroy an estimated five percent of the food produced worldwide and destroy thirty-three million tons of food per year, which is enough to feed a hundred and thirty million people, making them both destructive and deadly. Rodent management is an under-discussed public health problem. Rodents can create persistent and prevalent health problems from indigenous villages in the rainforest to rice farms in Asia and all the way to the metropolitan cities in US and around the world. Rodent infestations occur everywhere, and how we manage them will determine the health impacts that they have. Um, if you, next slide. And go ahead and click. Uh, as human habitats become denser, rodents are drawn to the allure of easy food access and safe harbage from predators. Rodent management can be categorized under prevention, exclusion, and elimination interventions, and under physical, chemical, biological, and electrical controls. Integrated pest management, or IPM practices, utilize a combination of controls to best manage the pest population. Knowing and understanding target species biology and habitats are critical for management and population control. Next slide. Um, so this project, uh, requested in parts by some residents of Nahat, includes research into rodent containment and/or management interventions for considered implementation. Um, there have been expressed concerns regarding rodent site use and implication for non-target species, as well as the environment. Um, additional information on alternative means of control has been, um, requested to be considered for implementation. Nahat's small landmass and ongoing coyote management issues make, uh, rodent control a concern. Next slide. Uh, for the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, One Health is the idea that the health of people is connected to the health of animals in the shared environment. When one is protected, all is protected. So Nahat is a tight-knit community of families and individuals committed to maintaining the health and the beauty of their island home. Concerns that an unchecked rodent population will provide easy food sources for the resident coyote population, encouraging them to remain close to neighborhoods and food establishments is a concern. In such a geographically limited environment, rodent management is a high priority in maintaining the health and safety of the community. Maintaining rodent control can opti- optimize public health, uh, while also potentially negative impacting one of the coyote food sources. Uh, next slide. So the methods, uh, we used, I, um, created and emailed a statewide electronic survey, um, and distributed to members of the Massachusetts Health Officers Association for input on regional rodent management practices. Uh, local town and jurisdiction websites were reviewed for availability of rodent management interventions and information. Um, a literature review was conducted. Fourteen thousand, three hundred and forty-eight titles were found for rodent management, so, um, definitely some literature out there. Fifteen titles were selected, um, and retrieved for review based on a pretty, um, condensed search criteria. Field review was also conducted with the direction of the local Board of Health Agent utilizing knowledge of the local geography, uh, history, and IPM practices over the last twenty-four years. Click. So a stakeholder analysis was created to utilize in determining stakeholder needs and wants, um, and communications and frequency. Uh, in this case, the Department of Public Works and health and government officials have high involvement, high, and high authority. Um, citizens and community members also have high interest and involvement in rodent management interventions, as the rodent population can directly impact homes, businesses, and health. Um, community buy-in is critical for successful planning and implementation. Collaborative community implementation will be necessary to effectively prevent and manage the rodent population. Uh, next slide. And go ahead and click. So we received a total of seventy-five responses, twenty-one point three percent, representing eighty-eight out of three hundred and fifty-one towns, which is a twenty-five point one percent response rate. Forty-five point seven percent reported that the towns jurisdictions have or are currently experiencing a rodent management concern, so it is out there. Fifty-five communities responded that they currently do not have a rodent management issue, and henceforth, no rodent management plan. One town reported that their rodent concern was primarily centered around fever control and damage. Click. Forty-seven point six percent of respondents, including those from towns who had and did not and did not have rodent issues or plans, were unsure if their methods were successful or not, and reported difficulty in monitoring and tracking complaints and resolutions. Forty-two percent of the towns, primarily those who reported rodent management issues and utilizing a variety of interventions, felt that the current methods were effective. Uh, next slide. So what types of methods are there? Research has revealed rodent control can generally be classified under four different categories: physical, biological, chemical, and electronic interventions. Uh, the physical interventions include taking steps to prevent rodents from entering buildings in the first place. This is a strong and effective means of rodent control. Um, sealing up entrance points inside and out, uh, sealing up food and water source supplies, eliminating sources of harbage can greatly discourage rodents from taking residence, and physical trapping humanly and lethally can work to remove the rodent problem before it grows, but it must be accomplished in the first sign of, uh, rodent entrance. Biological controls include utilizing natural predators, both wild and domestic, to control the population, plant-based chemicals and extracts, as well as newly developed rodent contraceptives. Rodents have highly, um, a heightened olfactory sensation, so this makes them extremely sensitive to strong smells such as cinnamon, peppermint, and predator urine, which can act as a deterrent for some pests. However, if a rodent is hungry enough and the food's accessible enough, rodents will disregard the negative stimulus, uh, in search of an easy meal. There is limited research on the efficacy and efficiency of these interventions. Chemical interventions include rodenticide, uh, which although effective, can have an unwanted effect on non-target species such as wildlife, domestic animals, and humans. Extreme caution must be taken when handling, baiting, and disposing of rodent sites. Uh, fumigation can also be effective in managing large growths, but can be quite costly. Chemical interventions such as, um, I'm sorry, electric, uh, electronic interventions can include electrical currents, high-frequency noise creation, and ultrasonic waves as a means to deter. high-frequency noise creation, and ultrasonic waves as a means to deter the rodent population. Electrical currents are not always effective or humane method of disposing of rodents or pests because they can sometimes misfire and cause a non-lethal hit. Electro- electrical interventions can also harm non-target species such as birds or insects if they happen to be in the area. Next slide. This one has a lot of clicks, so double, one more, there you go. So first and second generation rodent sites have long been the standard treatment when managing rodent infestations. Most contain poison or chemicals that prevent the rodents from clotting, and the affected rodent usually dies two to three days after ingesting. As mentioned before, rodenticide bait is highly effective in killing mice, but can also impact non-target species that might encounter the bait or eat the affected rodent. Predatory birds, foxes, coyotes, and household pets are at risk of becoming ill or dying and/or after ingesting the affected rodent. Special care needs to be taken, especially where children might be present. CDC recommends utilizing rodenticide as a last resort and preferably under the handling of licensed pest control operators. Next, click, there you go, smart boxes. Smart boxes are one of the newer non-toxic trapping technologies that catch rodents above ground. When a rodent enters the trap, sensors detect movement and body heat. A catch function is activated, immediately killing the rodent with an electrical current. The rodent is deposited into a plastic bag in a closed container. The trap is automatically resets itself. The smart system monitors an area and transmit activity occurrences remotely via timestamp activity. The system uses algorithms to predict infestations before they occur based on trend curves. Go ahead, one more click. And ContraPest is another newer rodent management technique. ContraPest is the first EPA-registered contraceptive bait and is targeted towards Norway and refried species. There's two active ingredients for vinyl fluorhexene diphasid and tripolide, which work to reduce fertility in the rodent population, both male and females. The short-acting half-life minimizes the effect on non-target populations such as predators, pets, and humans. In laboratory and field studies performed by the manufacturer, Sensatech revealed that ContraPest is repeatedly consumed over even available food and water. Studies involving laboratory and wild-caught rats, according to Sensatech, have demonstrated a ninety-three to a hundred percent reduction in litter sizes compared to controlled rats. And ContraPest is reportedly used as best utilized as a complementary benefit to existing integrated pest management practices. Sensatech literature reports reduced rodent sightings at bait station as the indicator of reduced population presence. And multiple major US cities have trialed the product, but some, including Washington DC, reportedly have discontinued the use due to inconclusive evidence. Next slide. So who is using what? Small towns, rural and cooperative communities reported relying primarily on owner responsibility for property management and maintenance, with the health department conducting site inspections and education is needed. Larger and more urban communities reported greater problems with rodent activities and reported using a combination of methods, including education, town ordinances, individual property management, and either chemical, biological, or physical control methods in targeted areas of concern. Many cities have participated in trials of newer rodent management technologies, including Stoughton, Abington, Beverly, Salem, and Peabody. City of Somerville has reported trialing several pilot programs and implementing IPM practices across multiple multiple departments to get the best approach. They have two full-time staff currently dedicated to their rodent program administration, and they report that their residential rodent control assistance program has had a positive impact over the last five years. So despite all of these trials, really integrating the IPM practices is their most effective means of control. Next slide. Control methods varied by town and cooperative, but the perceived most successful utilized integrated pest management approach is recommended by the CDC, which provided education, reduced areas of food source and harborage, and utilized additional control services from licensed pest control specialists as needed. Next slide. Says lots of clicks. In any established community, there's an organically occurring ecological cycle that has kind of a normal influx and recession of animal life. You know, some years we see a lot of rodents, we see a lot of rabbits, we see a lot of coyotes, and some years we see less. And that is a completely naturally occurring organic cycle. When examining rodent and vermin control, we look at food sources as the primary attractant. We often neglect and overlook the natural occurrence of the food in the environment. In the case of Nahat, we have abundant marine life, we have prolific backyard gardens, beautiful fruit trees, patio containers, chicken coops, naturally occurring prey, and unhelpful human practices, which include the improper garbage disposal, food left outside intended for pets, and accessible bird feeders. So we go ahead and click, we provide a variable buffet for the rodent population. Next slide. So inclusion wildlife populations, including rodents and coyotes, have been present in Massachusetts for thousands of years and can bring health risks to humans within close contact. Zoonotic disease transmission and both subsequent and/or accessory health implications are a public health priority. Increasing human populations, denser communities, and less natural habitat provide greater opportunity for feeding and harborage options, which draws wildlife ever closer to the human populations. Managing wildlife access to easy food and/or shelter is imperative to coexisting and keeping wildlife out of the town in their natural habitat. IPM services are environmentally friendly, focused on education and prevention through sanitation and exclusion. IPM practices include extermination only when absolutely necessary to control rodent population and infestation. Educating the community on rodent control interventions, working collaboratively with home and business owners, and reducing areas of food and harborage can work to effectively manage rodent population with little untargeted environmental impact. Adding the services of licensed pest management providers for larger infestations can offer a wide variety of additional removal and control methods and are most effective when combined with the other interventions. IPM practices can be applied to both global communities on both smaller and larger scales. Continued education on IPM practices are recommended for the citizens of Nahat. Many of their current coyote management procedures and interventions can translate to rodent management interventions as well. They're both very closely intertwined. Nahat prides itself on the cleanliness of the island, and certainly that's an advantage in rodent management practice as well as coyote. IPM practices will be both beneficial to not only preventing rodent infestations, but also managing coyote populations, increasing proximity within the town. Learning to coexist safely in a healthy manner is imperative for continued population health, and creating a multifaceted management approach gives the greatest opportunity for controls and management. And on this slide are just a couple examples of the education that I've created over the summer, both on rodent and rodent management flyer and a updated coyote postcard. Next slide. So that is the end. I just want to say a big thank you to Tony and the community of Nahat for welcoming me over the summer and especially, most especially, John for an incredibly educational, exciting, and dynamic internship experience. And there are references included at the end if any of you would love to read more about rodent management practices.
Thanks, Meredith.
Thank you all.
Is the, is the smart box something that a resident would use? Or is that more like a municipal type contraption?
I know that right now, most of the smart boxes are being trialed in municipal areas. I think the eventual plan might be moving towards residential, and they might even offer a resident. Actually, I do know that they have now since offered a, they have started a residential program as well.
And then on the contraceptive version, you mentioned that half-life of the contraception is sure enough that it doesn't risk, like, for example, birds of prey, or?
Yes, sorry. Well, yes. So the, the half-life of the contraceptive means it gets in and out of the system very quick, very rapidly. So the effect on non-target species is minimal. That being said, that means that that rodent needs to consume that contraceptive every day, just like a human would need to remember to take their birth control pill every day. The rodent would need to consume the bait every single day to maintain that reduced fertility rate.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to emphasize, point on the contraceptive approach that the, the material is subject to the effects of, of weather. It is a liquid and therefore, subject to our overnight winter temperatures, it does freeze. And the, it is very difficult to make sure that there is enough at the feeding station to ensure that the, the target species are getting adequate doses every day, let alone the difficulty of making sure that the rodents or any other animal it is dosed for is going to that feeding station. And, and for that reason, my colleagues in northeastern Massachusetts have not been able to endorse this approach for their municipalities. It is certainly has different implications if there is an individual property owner, be it a property manager at a, a location or residential or commercial or a homeowner at an owner-occupied location. They have different abilities to monitor than a municipality that is running a rodent control program. And I'd like to note, also, Meredith began her presentation giving us the ten-thousand-foot view of rodent control, how important it is globally as, as a concern. Those of us who are a certain age remember the quote attributed to Tip O'Neill when he said, "All politics is local." That is certainly true, and it's certainly also true for public health. So we, we are able to focus on, on Nahat for Meredith's internship and, and for this project. And as Meredith was pointing out, Nahat has certain characteristics that are common to any municipality and unique to Nahat. So these are considerations to take in, into thinking about going ahead with any particular approach. And I think it is again worth noting, as Meredith did several times, while no municipalities in northeastern Massachusetts, to our knowledge, are using any new approach alone, having tried quite a few. The most effective is a robust, community-wide, and constant IPM approach. IPM, again, standing for Integrated Pest Management. So there's no quick way, there's no silver bullet. It is, it is a hard slog, even for those communities that have staff that can specialize in rodent control. I think Meredith's presentation has synthesized what we've been looking at, seeing, and, and talking about for many years, and I think it was very well put together. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Meredith. Very comprehensive. Thank you for all the work they've done. One of the most, the key component here is, in terms of controlling rodents, is food source, I think, right? You eliminate the food source, you're halfway there, maybe. So, you know, I think that is a very important component here that we need to focus on. The whole integrated package is, is important, but, you know, trying to eliminate the food source is probably the most important.
Mark, I'd like to add that over the years, when we've looked at food sources, we've had to look at people running a, a, a normal life at, at their home. And so we'll request the people with chicken coops to harden those structures. We'll ask the people with the backyard vegetable gardens to, again, harden that, that, that garden. There, there's approaches, fencing, and, and certain complementary flowers that will aid in making sure that the vegetables are not a, a primary food source for not only rodents, but the other animals that we are looking to control, including coyotes. And the several people in town who are currently, currently have chicken coops, in my opinion, are doing very well in terms of hardening that, that structure. Meredith and I have visited those coops during this past, these past ten weeks, and we, we were very impressed with the efforts that people have put into, into those chicken coops. So it is doable. An integrated pest management approach is doable without eliminating all of the ways that, that we have of, of living a, a, a full life. Even bird feeders can be operated in a way to minimize access for the rodents and any other animals, including bears. You'll notice that there were no bears reported in town, and I think we, we, we can thank the, the bird feeder, the people who feed birds, because they're, they're really good at that. At least that's what I'm going to say tonight.
John, is there any, is there any kind of a pest management program in place now in town, by the town itself?
No, not formally. I think the biggest assistance that I, I can give and biggest recommendation to folks is to call me. I've had a, a, a long career, and, and I've never been without nuisance cases, particularly where food sources have been accept, accessible to whatever animal or insect we are considering as vermin. And it is usually always the same approach, food sources and shelter opportunities. But vermin are always going to be with us. We just need to control their population and control the food sources as much as possible. So we've always been able to work out a good look at a, a person's residence or place of business and identify what, if any, food sources or, or sheltering opportunities there might be there.
And can I just also add, John, that is consistent with the data that we collected from some of the smaller towns and, and more of the cooperative towns, more of the rural away, is really relying on the public health officers to come out, assist with inspections, provide the education, and, and kind of tighten up practices. Really, that, that's what a lot of these areas are doing and doing successfully.
Have, have you drawn any comparisons with other communities during the study? Communities like ours, similar, similar area, oceanside, et cetera?
The responses we got did include, I'm not sure, I think Lynn was on there. We, we did get a full list of eighty-eight responses, so varying from tiny rural communities such as Ludlow all the way up to Cambridge, Boston, Somerville, some of the larger communities. So, and, and that was the synthesis, like, a lot of the smaller communities either don't have a problem with rodent management and are relying on the, the integrated approach kind of unofficially with education and inspections as needed. The larger towns tend to have a more of a rodent issue and so require the integrated pest managements and then take it in a stop. Somerville, you know, actually issues citations, and they have demolition protocols and policies. So that is part of their process.
I think it's fair to say that the town of Nahat takes that integrated approach. It's just not formal or official, but essentially, that's what we do. We do a lot of education, a lot of site visits. John works with, you know, all of, you know, the commercial businesses in town and then certainly on-call for residential issues and spends a lot of time, you know, working with whoever might call on those unique situations of educating them as to where the pest might be coming from, how to correct it. And then a lot of, as Meredith had mentioned, Gene, you know, a lot of our efforts with coyote control has a dual benefit and has, and has had a positive impact A dual benefit and has, and has had a positive impact on our rodent control stuff too. Um, and then at lastly, in that last slide, you saw Meredith had, had put together a couple um. Postcards and, and pamphlets for us to uh, to add to our website and to ha- give, provide John to hand out. Um, as he's going around and, and, and um. I just wanted to say thank you to Meredith, uh, the, thank you for doing that presentation and putting together that case study. Uh, very well done and John, thank you for all the work you do for the town and. Um, and then really, you know, I want to commend the residents of the town in a hot because. Um, you know, I, I feel that especially with the coyote issue that we've had in town. Um, you know, the residents have really adapted and responded well and appropriately to the guidance that we've received on that. And it's true, the town is extremely clean and that's not just town property, that's pro- personal property, commercial property. It's, it's very well kept and um, I think that, you know, the town, the townspeople should be commended for that, for their efforts. And it makes a difference, you know, in our, in our situation.
I just, I wanted to echo that, Tony, as an outsider coming into Nahat. I was blown away by the cleanliness of the town and how, you know. Uh, the citizens are very responsible in their garbage and putting their garbage out just the morning of or yet. And, and really, um, you know, I was impressed that a, a lot of these things that you're already doing. To help manage the coyotes are, are also very effective in managing rodent populations. So uh, as an outsider, it's an incredibly clean and beautiful town.
Thank you.
Thank, uh, thank you, Meredith, and thank you, John. And I, I, I also want to say that our commercial establishments, the Tides, the. Kelly Greens and Ocean View and uh captains and. Uh, Henry Catering, they all do a great job in making sure that they uh, they're keeping their establishments clean and um well protected. So I want to thank them for their efforts also. But thank you again, I appreciate it. Okay. Okay, we're gonna move on to um, Tony, you want to talk about the special time meeting in public forum? Questions and answers. But um, there's one thing I want to say, Tony, if I could, while we're on this subject. I've been noticing there was some chatter on social media about the Board of Selectmen's vote um, a few weeks ago to limit the quorum. From 75 to 30 votes. Um, and there was, I, I guess there was some questioning why we did, why we uh made that vote. Um, the answer to that is quite simple. Uh, cause we want to make sure we have a special town meeting. Um, certainly limiting uh the quorum to 30 votes does not mean we're capping. The, the, the participation at 30. I hope a thousand people show up at the meeting. Um, but I don't want to hold a special town meeting and incur the expenses of a special town meeting. Um, if we don't have the votes to conduct it. So we want to make sure that we um, if we're gonna put on a special town meeting. We can, we can have the vote, um, you know, that's needed. Uh, but certainly, there was not the intention of the Board of Selectmen to limit um, the participation at town meeting. Um, we all would like to see a, as many people um come as possible. So I just wanted to lay that out there because I was a little concerned with some of the chatter I saw on social media regarding that.
Yeah, and, and you know, we thought about this scheduling the date of the town meeting. We procured the demo in June and. Contractors who bid are only required to hold their bid for 14 days. Um, so when we got the results of those bids, I'll get into that, but uh, we asked the low bidder if they would hold their vote. Uh, for up to 90 days, which brings us to late September. So, you know, certainly August is not a good time to hold a special town meeting. It would have been tough for us to pull everything together to potentially host one with. Preparing the finance committee book and all the other items that we had to put together. Um, and usually, you know, people take vacations in August. So that put us into early September. Um, the first week is Labor Day. Um, and, and you know, we, looking at it, we said. I think it's less likely to get people to come to Town Hall on a Saturday afternoon in one of the last, you know, Saturdays of the summer. Versus potential, you know, doing it on a weeknight. So that's how we ended up with a Tuesday night. Um, but yeah, essentially, we, we want to make sure we have a quorum. It's a very important vote. It's um, you know, and, and there's a lot of effort that goes in uh preparing for the meeting. So um, we want to make sure that uh, we have enough people there and I suspect we will. Um, but certainly, as you mentioned, it's, it's not a cap, it's, it's a minimum. Um, well, so tonight's, this, this portion of the meeting, we talked as a board, uh, the Board of Selectmen and I spoke and. About, you know, wanting to provide uh the residents an opportunity to get on here and maybe ask some questions, uh make some comments. You know, we're certainly not debating the, the vote tonight. But want to make sure, you know, that we educate people on, you know, how we got to this point, why it's important that we take this, uh have this meeting. And um, you know, provide as much opportunity uh for the public to, you know, ask questions. Um, and that's why we're doing this tonight. Well, we, we could do another one um prior to town meeting. Um, we have another Board of Selectmen meeting on the 6th of uh September. So we could, we could do this again if there are additional questions that come up between now and then. And of course, you know, my office is always open and we're all accessible. So if any, anybody has, you know, wo- would feel more comfortable speaking, you know, on a one-on-one form, format. I'm happy to do that as well. Um, but essentially, you know, we are um. Attempting to carry out the vote of 2021 uh with the Coast Guard housing property. And, you know, over the last two years, we've been working to put the town in a position to go ahead and procure. The demolition of, of the vacant properties. Um, and over that time, the market has increased significantly. Um, the reason for that time period is that there's a number of factors, but you know, largely. Uh, the, the town meeting vote and, and recommendation of the Coast Guard Housing Committee was to provide residents. Uh, uh, a one-year grace period to find alternative housing. So the vote happened in May of 2021. Uh, that um. That notice or uh request to vacate went out in September of 2021. Um, in part, some of the reason that we didn't put that out until September was because. Between the town meeting vote in September, we had some uh, an A and R process that we were going through with the planning board. Uh, some land title research uh activity that we had to square away. Because there was an issue with when the federal government provided the town the property. So we had to clear that up. Certainly, we wanted to make sure that that wasn't going to be a uh. A hurdle we couldn't overcome before we started asking residents to vacate. So we cleared that hurdle, then we provided the one-year notice uh for residents to vacate the property. Um, and so that would bring you to September of 2022. Um, it wasn't until April of 2023 that we had nine properties vacant. And certainly, you know, the. Uh, in order to get the best possible price from a contractor to come in and de- demolish the properties. Is to have the most amount of vacant properties available for that. Rather than having a contractor mobilize multiple times, which would cost the town more money. Um, also, in the last uh, in the last few months or the last year. As uh the properties became vacated, we hired a contractor to um assess the building materials. So that they could produce a scope that could be included in the procurement documents of what building materials exist. And essentially describe to potential bidders what they would be dealing with so that they could bid. Uh, price as close to possible as what they think it's going to cost to remove the buildings. Um, that wasn't, you know, again, that's us, that's something that we wouldn't have done until. We had a significant number of properties vacant because they actually went into the vacant properties and assessed each one. Um, so they put together a scope for us, we put out the bid and the bid results came in. And the low bidder came in at 669 uh thousand dollars. And so. Our original, in 2021, town meeting approved $300,000. Uh, the contractor that we hired to do the assessment on the properties, that contract is for $69,102. So of the 300, about 70,000 is um allocated for that service. So that leaves you about $230,000. Uh, so in order um. To award a contract, we have to have the funds approved and authorized by the town. Uh, one thing we looked at, again, keeping in mind that this is only for nine vacant properties and there are 12. Uh, we, you know, looked at, are looking at how much it's costing uh per unit to uh on, based on that low bid. And, you know, extrapolating what we expect it to cost to do the remaining three, once they are eventually vacated as well. Um, we also have potential unknown costs. Uh, once we remove the underground oil tanks. The earth around them will be tested for, you know, any type of necessary uh environmental remediation. That's an unknown factor right now. Uh, so we want to include some contingency there. Um, and then there's going to be costs associated with the actual, you know, procurement of selling the properties and legal work related to that. Um, so the town's asking, the special town meeting is to authorize the town to borrow up to $1 million. Which in total, that would give the town an authorization of 1.3, the 300 that was approved in 2021. And should this pass uh in September, the additional million. Um, and that would leave us, uh essentially that leaves us um. A contingency amount of $339,839898. So that would allow us to proceed with this, with this uh bid. And, and get the nine properties uh demo. And it would give us an addition, we'd have an additional 339898 to finish the last three. And any other types of costs that may come up. Um, so that's my brief overview. Um. Do any of the members of the Selectmen want to add to that before we go to? Uh, the public for any questions and answers?
Josh?
Um. Uh, I guess I'll just add that um, I support um what you, Mark and Tony said about um the reduced quorum. The, the suggestion of these Facebook posts that we're wishing to limit participation is. Is 100% false and ridiculous and we, we hope and expect to have robust participation. Um, on the topic of the expense, you know, nobody wants to pay more than planned for the necessary work, but um. Uh, likewise, we don't want to have a special town meeting, but um that is what the circumstances uh dictate. So um, uh, I hope people approach this with an open mind and understand that um. Uh, this is necessary to uh, complete the wish from the 2021 uh town meeting vote.
If I could to add to that. If I could add to that, I think at the uh, the, the past Finance and Advisory Committee meeting. Uh, we threw together some numbers and I think it's important to note that after these are sold. And the associated cost is subtracted, the town still, and Tony, cor- correct me if I'm wrong, will come out with a. A 1.7 to $2 million profit.
Yeah, I'd have to re- recheck the numbers. Obviously, it's based on an estimate uh value of vacant properties. Um, if you estimate them to sell, um, you know, somewhere between 400 and 450,000 dollars. Let's, let's average it out at 425 times 12, that's 5.1 million. Uh, minus the 1.8 million that we owe by January 2025. On the loan for the original purchase of the property and minus the additional 1. Um, point 3. That we're asking, you know, that we've already approved three and we're asking for the additional one, that would leave a. Balance or additional profit of $2 million and, and I think that's on the conservative side. Um. So there's still, you know, this, the, the potential revenue produced by the sale of the property. Should certainly cover the additional cost of. Dim, dim, uh borrowing for demolish, dem- uh demolishing the properties.
And, and leave a healthy profit.
Okay, um, thank you, Tony, for that overview. Uh, I think the sooner we get um. This property cleaned up, um, the better off we're all going to be. Um, the longer we wait, the more expensive it could be, particularly with, you know, underground fuel storage tanks. Um, we don't think they're leaking now, but the longer you wait, um, the more you're exposed to those perhaps dangers. So I think it's really important that we get this property cleaned up um as a first step. So hopefully, uh, we'll see everybody at town meeting. If there's any uh questions um online now, Tony, about this, be glad to open it up.
Yep, if anyone on the call uh cares to ask a question or make a comment, you know, please just um raise your hand, unmute yourself. Uh, state your name and address and um we'll try to answer your question as best as possible. Uh, all right, Peter.
Okay, couple of things to say. One is, when I was younger, the um. Refuse the, the garbage pickup was actually free because there's a value to the um.
Pete, uh, Peter, would you mind, I'm stating your name and address just to uh.
Oh, I, I am sorry. I am sorry. I'm Peter Glockey, 27th Road, Nahat, Mass. Um, so what I was gonna say, number one is, the refuse pickup, uh, referring black earth. Is um, when I was a, when I was younger, it was free because the value to, of the garbage that was picked up. Was used and actually at the time, it wasn't composting, it was uh pig farmers. But there was a value to that. So now to expect people to pay to take away something. That they could actually garbage disposal and get rid of for free, to me seems a little odd. Um, and that's actually why I don't do black earth. My, my neighbors do, but I don't. I don't want to pay for something that has value to someone else. That's the first thing I want to say. Second thing I want to say is when you talk about trash collection and unified. Uh, containers, that also seems to indicate, like the recycling, everyone gets one container. So even though my trash is generally one green bag. Per week, sometimes after cleaning out storage or cleaning out my basement, they have two, three, four, five things outside. And generally, when you start talking about unifying the trash collection. It limits people to one barrel per week. No more. Nothing else is picked up. And that's my second concern. And then the third thing that I'm going to bring up is the whole thing about rodent uh. Uh, infestation. Do we really have a problem in town? besides near the food service places that have rodents? I haven't seen rodents anywhere near my neighborhood for, for a year. I haven't seen raccoons, I haven't seen skunks ever, ever since we've had coyotes. Um, and I haven't actually seen coyotes in Little Nahat for over a year. So is rodents in Nahat really a big enough deal? Aside from people controlling their own waste disposal, is it really a big enough deal to look at the various options that were presented? There's three topics. Yeah, okay.
Uh, I, I was opening this up uh for questions and answers originally on the Coast Guard housing property. Public forum was, is going to come next, but you did bring up a few points. Let me just say um first of all, trash collection was never free in the town. At one point in time, it was part of your tax rate. But with the onset in the late nineteen eighties, nineteen nineties, with proposition two and a half, the state authorized um municipalities to uh create enterprise funds and to separate out uh trash and water and sewer from their tax rate um on separate billings because they realize they realize excuse me, Peter, they realize
No, 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 you're you're misunderstanding my argument. My argument is not with trash collection besides the one barrel per house, which is a way to limit things. My, my, I'm going with the, with the garbage collection, which was free.
Yeah, right. You're talking about, you're, you're saying composting used to be free. It used to be
Because there's a value, there's a value to the things that they get in, in quantity, after they gather all that stuff in the hunt, they go back and they compost or they feed their pigs or they do, back when I was a kid, it was a pig farmer, but there's a value to that, which then is something that should be recognized that the residents shouldn't have to pay for. We're giving a value to someone else.
Right, right. So Peter, I wrote down your three things. Please stay on the call. I'll answer them when we get to citizens forum. Um, I, I think I understand what you're saying, but this part of the meeting is mostly for any questions related to the special town meeting article. And so I want to, I want to stick to that. Uh, do you have anything on that?
No, I, I, I apologize for jumping in early.
No, that's no problem. It's no problem. I'll come back to that. I'll come back to that during citizens forum.
Always good. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Uh, Brendan, please, again, uh, name and address.
Brendan Baronic, Homestead to Summer Street. A couple of questions. Uh, one, I had sent an email a couple of weeks ago, I think to you, Tony, asking about a two, the twenty twenty-one um information sessions, number one and two, whether those were still available online. Uh, and s- and, and hear a response. I wasn't sure if um those were available um or posted.
Um, sorry, I missed your email. So you're talking about the info sessions that I did leading up to that town meeting?
Yes, yeah, because number three is available online, but one and two, I haven't been able to find. And when it gets to talking about Article twenty, uh, it ju- uh, you basically you uh said like all the material was covered in the previous two information sessions and people should look at those. So that's why I was wondering.
That's, so that's not helpful to you. Uh, okay, I will, I'll, I'll take a look, see if I can find them. If they're recorded, they should be up. Um, I don't recall if we recorded them or not, but uh I, I'll try and find them for you.
Okay, uh, then I guess the next question I had was uh back in twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one when the Coast Guard presented at the town meeting, they listed on the screen, they showed, you know, their approach and they out costs and they mentioned the three hundred thousand, there, you know, within the three hundred thousand, they had listed a hundred and sixty thousand needed for demo. And there'd be plus additional costs if there was leakage. I was wondering, where did the hundred and sixty thousand come from? Did the town at the time get bids on what it'd take to demo the properties?
So I'd have to ask the members of the Coast Guard Design Committee, because they had originally come up with that estimate. Um, I think they, I think they just did some some, you know, general research trying to get those costs. But certainly, as I mentioned, you know, the assessment that we've conducted in the past few months now uh, on the, you know, the billing materials so that we could include that in the procurement, that hadn't been done yet. A- and, you know, obviously the ju- in general, uh, prices have increased since then.
Okay, uh, I, I get, so I rewatched the, the twenty twenty-one um town meeting and discussion about Article twenty. And there, there didn't seem to be a clear mention that there, no environmental assessment had been done. And I was trying to figure out when that was communicated to the voters. Um, it was only stated that, you know, if leaks were found, there would be a cost. I believe that's what the, the person from the Coast Guard said, uh, committee had said.
Um, I don't know if it was, I don't know if that, you know, was ever asked or, or if that was ever communicated. But it certainly hadn't been done um at that time. I think they were trying to provide, I mean, I think they tried to provide the most um accurate estimate possible at that time. It's certainly just, you know, is a different two and a half years later, so it's just uh, or three years later, so it's, it's uh, you know, it's just a different market now. Um, but I don't know if they ever articulated that at the time. I mean, the threat of potential leaks and what that unknown cost of remediation still exists today. We don't know, right? Because you're not going to know until you actually dig up the tanks.
So speaking of the tanks, so the properties are vacant, have the tanks been emptied?
No, it's part of this process, that part of the bid, bid documents um here. And a, a part of this demo, this procurement, this job would be to properly uh remove any remaining ma- um material in the tanks, properly dispose of it and then remove the tanks themselves.
Is there any reason for why we hadn't just emptied the tanks in the last couple of years, especially if the properties were vacant? Like, does it seem like we just left a ticking time bomb?
Um, well, I don't know if it's a, I would call it that. I don't, you know, we may not have any issue whatsoever right now. But again, we didn't have the, the properties, you know, we didn't have nine vacant until April. And so as long as there were still residents living there, w- we have to provide heat. So it wa- it's, it's not something that we could have, you know, done in a um you know, a uh, a mass effort.
Okay. Uh, oh, and when the buildings were, that were vacant were assessed, was there any remarkable difference between the buildings? Or were they basically cookie cutter and the same construction and materials?
Essentially, they're, they're mostly cookie cutter. Um, you know, some have put uh new flooring down um on top of the old uh, original, you know, tile. Um, but essentially, they're all, they're all the same. We have one property that had a underground tank removed a few years ago, um, maybe five or six years ago. So that one's certainly unique.
Okay. All right. So I was just wondering, since if they're pretty much cookie cutter, then, you know, the, the expectations about the homes you haven't assessed yet. Maybe you, 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 you may have a reasonable handle as what might be there?
Yes, um. However, when you bid this type of workout, you know, being able to specifically state what exists in each unit is going to give the ability of the bidders, you know, to bid a more accurate price. When you kind of put it out there is, this is what we assume. They're going to add in contingency numbers and potentially give you a larger price.
Yeah, I, I can understand it, but they're also going to know that these were all built at the same time by this, by the government so that they, you generally are homogeneous.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Shannon.
Yes, sir.
You just say your name and uh address and go ahead.
Sure, uh, my name is uh John Shannon Bianchi, fourteen Harborview Road, Nahat. Uh, so my question, I'll put it up in the chat. I'll just read it. Might be easier for everyone else to follow along. Uh, could we allocate money and fund a handicap accessible heritage trail from Veterans Memorial to Bailey's Hill with the proceeds of the profits from the sale of the Coast Guard lots? The Heritage Trail runs through the Coast Guard Housing Property and I think it would be a nice gesture to give something back to the community for selling these lots. Is that a, is that a possibility to allocate money from the sale of the, of these lots at town meeting?
The, the, the trail will exist um through um the property. Um, we have sectioned that trail out, that we, we're going to make sure that that, the Heritage Trail does cut through there at the Bailey's Hill, yeah.
But I, I Like handicap, ha- handicap accessible, like for a wheelchair?
I'm not sure any part of the Heritage Trail was handicap accessible. Uh, we'll try to currently. Well, I mean, certainly
Okay.
I'm not sure
This, this So I need to get like some big wheels on my, my wheelchair.
Shannon, the answer is, the answer is uh no, as far as at this town meeting, we can't do that. Um, but the proceeds of the sale. First, we're required to pay off the one point eight million dollar loan. The remaining amount comes into the general fund and, you know, it's, it's like a free cash revenue, so it should be used on one-time uh funds, like uh funding um projects of cap, you know, one-time capital projects or building, you know, paying down debt or building up our reserves. Um, so it'll be it would be a future time meeting
Yeah, right.
Say, hey, you know, I'd like to use, you know, we'd like to, you know, through a CPC project or something, you know, there's a million other ways to do that. So, so yes, we're certainly going to provide the right type of funds that could be used for that type of project. But no, it, that's not something that we would be able, be able to do at the special town meeting.
But it would go into the general fund, which is really promising. So that's good.
I, I would say that the uh handicap um accessible her- heritage trail or some portion of it anyway, uh, would be an excellent CPC application uh, because we have the benefit of the state match for, for such a thing, so keep that and anyone could put one in, so.
Awesome, awesome. Yeah, well, thank you for that. That's, that's my only question.
All right, thank you. Okay, uh, is there anyone else on the call that, that um would like to ask a question? Okay.
Okay, good. Uh, so let's move on to E. We have the town administrator's goals. Tony, um, you get a lot, I, I know that you get, you got them out to all of us today. While we put these on our next meeting, um, I'll ask um Josh and Gene to take a look at them. Um, to send Christian any um edits or additions that you would like to see and then perhaps we could deal with it at a next meeting. Is that okay with you?
That's fine with me. This, these, what I sent you out today was a status update of where we are with the goals that were set by last year. Um, it sounds like you were asked, did you want me to s- uh start putting together goals for the upcoming year?
Uh, yeah, so I, what I, what I wanted to do is to take last year's goals, because some of them can be ongoing. Um, and, you know, members of the board could, could continue those as goals for next, for this year. Um, for this coming fiscal year, um, or we could add new ones, but uh what I like to have is a new set of, a revised set of goals um at our next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, I think, Mark, we could um, you know, what Tony submitted um this afternoon was sort of his view of the status versus last year's goals and then, so let's suggest maybe we review that status and then the second phase would be establishment or recycling of goals for twenty twenty, well, for, yeah, fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Right, that's good.
Can we, can we take those in two different segments? Bring this back what Tony gave us today, bring that back to the next meeting and go over those and then give us another meeting or two to re- review the new goals and objectives that he's establishing.
I think that makes sense, Gene. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think that makes sense, Gene, because A, it would be a long meeting if we reviewed all last year's goals and stats and established new ones and the rationale behind those and so on. Um, so I, I think it makes sense to split them up and, and furthermore, um, our assessment on where we are versus last year's goals is likely to play into what we set for next year's goal. So uh, I would agree that breaking it into um a series of meetings would be desirable.
Sounds good. Okay, let's plan on doing that then. Okay, um, Tony, Lowlands?
Uh, yeah, so we, we've had Lowlands Public Drainage as an agenda item at the last selectman meeting. Uh, since then, we've had some uh communication with the neighborhood uh through email. And so I, I think, I think a lot of people missed it and so I wanted to kind of repeat what I said at the last meeting. But also you should know that I emailed them tonight and uh hope to schedule a neighborhood meeting uh for either next week or the week after, um, so that, you know, to give them a little bit of an opportunity to um, it's, it's a long kind of discussion, so it's a, it's a uh, in-depth project that we're working on over there, so I didn't want to take up a ton of time of tonight. Um, but essentially, you know, we've we've conducted, we've completed the assessment um conducted by Dubois and King, which really looked at, you know, an alternative analysis of, of the drainage issues uh, in that neighborhood, the public health concerns that we have and prioritized um solutions and an approach. Um, one of the first uh items is to uh inspect, repair and upgrade the existing stormwater uh system and potentially expand it uh underneath, you know, the streets of uh Fox Hill, Castle Way, Castle Road and Ward Road. Um, and the second uh part of that assessment recommended, you know, restoring um the downfall pipe on Castle Road that goes to Black Rock Beach, um, and perhaps doing that more in a forced uh pump type downfall system that is activated um by flow or in emergency situations. Um, it also recommended the continued maintenance and upgrade of the um stormwater ditch system that flows from the Lowlands to Bear Pond. Um, it did some, you know, the analysis had taken a look at that. It's actually uh, has improved a lot in the last few years already because of the work with mosquito control, but um, there's you know, what we, what we found there is that it's, it's pitched correctly, it's moving, but there's culvert issues. So wherever there's like a crossing um along that ditch system, the culverts are slowing down the flow of stormwater traveling to Bear Pond. Uh, so there's some improvements recommended there. Um, so our uh, we have funding already approved uh you know, for these efforts, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You know, we don't, that was approved at a previous town meeting. We don't know, you know, how far that's going to go. Uh, but we're But we're going to start with recommendation one, which is improving the stormwater system in that area. We notified National Grid that that was going to be our next project, as well as notifying them that we were going to be doing the water main on Fox Hill Road. It's a standard practice, because typically National Grid, you know, if we're going to be entering, you know, going to be repaving a road or doing utility work there, they want to know about it. And if they have needs, they want to come in and, you know, get ahead of us and do their repairs first. So that worked. So National Grid, we, we, we actually pushed them to come in and redo the gas main on Lower Fox Hill Road, as well as install a new gas main on Ward Road. Because residents on Ward Road were connected to the gas main on Fox Hill Road through a budding property. So we wanted to fix that. And we also got the National Grid to install a gas main down Castle Way into the Lowlands Pump Station, where we're going to soon be doing an upgrade to that, to that facility. And by adding a gas main in that area, it allows us to have backup generators running off of national, unnatural gas. So we, we, you know, by pushing for those efforts, it did delay some of National Grid's work. But they have since, over the last few months, they've made those upgrades and repairs. Unfortunately, as they did that, they actually damaged the stormwater system that we're going to be attempting to repair, to fix anyways. But that led to a lot of drainage issues, you know, of a, a system that was, was working. You know, and needed improvements, failed to continue to work for a couple of months on the lower part of Fox Hill Road because of the breaks that National Grid had caused on our system. Took some time to work with National Grid to get them out and prove that they were the cause of those issues. And finally, we did get them out and they've since made those repairs. So now we have the water main work in design phase. And we also, in that same area, have some sewer repairs related to the II work that's listed under the DEP consent order. It has high priority repairs. So we're going to have a lot of underground utility work happening in that neighborhood. And, you know, in our, our assessment is that the fastest way for us to get the stormwater work done is to include it in the procurement of those projects, because it's going to be the same contractor. He's going to already be mobilized. You know, it's going to produce, result in a faster timeframe on the project and potentially reduce costs, which would then allow us to stretch that dollar towards Phase Two of the project. So that's where we are right now. We're hoping that we get that. Our goal is to procure that work in the next month or so, and hopefully have it constructed prior to the end of the calendar year. So that the trenches can settle. Typically, when you do underground, underground utility work, you want to give a repaired, you know, roadway trench one winter season to settle before you pave. So that's another thing. We're trying to, you know, Castle Road's a mess from the work that National Grid did, and so is Fox Hill Road. And it's going to be even more of a mess once we do the water and II work. So the sooner we get that project done and we repair those trenches and let them settle, the sooner we'll be able to come back and pave, you know, the end of next year. So that's our, that's where we are. That's what our effort is, is trying to get this project, get this Phase One project designed and procured as soon as possible.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. And when do you think that neighborhood meeting is going to be?
I suggest tonight, I suggest in my email with them, I suggested a Tuesday night, maybe the 22nd or the 29th.
I see some, you're starting to get some responses, so that's good. Just want to take the opportunity to encourage anyone who lives in the neighborhood to attend these in-person meeting and spread the word to your friends that might not be listening to this exciting meeting. But I'm sure if you live in that neighborhood, you'll want to be part of that meeting on the 22nd or the 29th.
Right. That meeting will be open to the public, Tony, correct?
Uh, yeah. I, yeah. I mean, unless it's, it's either gonna, I don't know if we're going to do it in person. That was one of the suggestions I made. It could be by Zoom, but either way, I would post it on the community calendar and anyone could join. Yeah.
Great. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, let's move on. Preserving his point, no update on that? Josh, any update?
Yeah. Just to recap a little bit, on the eminent domain case a while back ago, now or a year ago, Northeastern filed a motion that the conservation restriction was not for a valid purpose. So we're currently in that phase of the project where the court decides whether this is true or not. And as I said, it's been going on for over a year. A number of people have been deposed and gone into Boston and provided testimony for Northeastern's, you know, lawyers, including you and me, Mark. At this point, all the depositions are complete and the discovery phase is now closed. Disposited, this of motions must be filed by September 15th. And oppositions to those motions will be served by October 13th. The motion packages must be filed with the court by November 17th. There is a status conference on December 13th. At that status conference, we expect the court to set a hearing date on all the motions. That here will probably be in early January. I remain confident that we will succeed in preserving each point as a conservation area and return to having full public access to this area for all of us to enjoy. Our lawyers likewise are confident that the courts will agree that the conservation restriction is in fact valid public purpose. And so hopefully they're right. And we'll move on to the next phase of the process. In, not until January, of course, but where Board of Three Commissioners decide on the fair compensation for the conservation restriction. So that is the stats.
Thank you, Josh. Great update. Thanks a lot. Okay. Town administrator's report.
I'll just remind, you know, repeat that we're by the, we're hoping that the Little Nahat Playground equipment's going to be installed the first week of September. Excited for that project to get completed. And I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that. I, I see it's, it's already 8:23. So I know we have citizens forums still.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Tony. Okay. We'll open up the citizens forum. I know Peter had some questions. Do you want to follow up on that, Chris? Tony?
Yes. And Christine, sorry, I saw your hand raised after, but I'll get to you in a second. All right. So Peter, you had talked about composting used to being free. And so why would, you know, why would we, you know, ask residents to pay for it now? You know, I don't, I don't know. I don't know why the market has changed on composting materials. But it's not, you know, to have curbside collection of composting, there isn't any free service available. And, you know, in this pilot program, we're certainly not requiring people to compost or to, to, to sign up for this program. But we're incentivizing it. And the reason is because of our effort to attempt to reduce your trash rate and the cost to the town to, to do curbside collection of trash. And that would be accomplished by, you know, in one way, by reducing tonnage. So if you incentivize the public to, you know, move the heaviest part of their trash into composting, it could produce a significant savings for the entire town on trash collection costs. Yeah, I'm going to unmute you, Peter. Or ask you to unmute.
Okay. So, so I guess what I'm saying is, if we're looking at reducing trash costs, would the town engage the collection agency and say, hey, we'll give you $5,000 a year to collect the whole town? Rather than passing that cost off onto individual people? That would clearly reduce our trash rate. But it would also reduce our, would increase our recycle rate. Is it something that the town would consider so there'd be no cost to the end user? But the town would take it on as a, a town-wide contract?
So it, we did look into that. It's two different companies. So you have Waste Management, who does your, you know, household waste and recycling collection. And then Black Earth Composting is a separate company. Waste Management doesn't offer composting at the curbside collection point. And so if the town were to, you know, hire Black Earth Composting or another composting company to provide curbside collection, it would actually increase your trash fee, because now we're, we're bringing in another contract that, you know, your trash rate funds. So it's, it's a pass-through. There's no, you know, the town's not. The town wouldn't actually reduce by forcing a, you know, by engaging in another contract for another collection service for composting. What?
What I think we're avoiding here is there's value to the compo. And in the past, the people who collected it recognized that value. And there was no cost to the end user, because they were collecting product that was of value to their organization. So.
Essentially, it was back to- Yeah, that market has changed. If you can find a, a company that will pick up your compost for free, I, I'll call them tomorrow. And, and, you know, because it would help, it would help our, it would help our tonnage on the waste management side, because you're now moving that compost out of the waste stream into the composting stream. So I would definitely be interested in that.
I do understand that, but where, where my neighbor uses that service and they pay for it. And I think, why would I pay for it? Because I can dispose of that stuff for free. And, and I do have compost in the backyard. I have the, the compost bin. We put, we do put a lot of stuff in that. But still, why would I elect to pay for something that I can do for free somewhere else? And I guess that's, that's my point is, why would anyone in town elect to pay for something that they can do for, for free somewhere else?
Yeah, no, it's, and that's a challenging feat for me when I'm trying to come up with a, a way to incentivize it. There are other benefits to composting, you know, outside of just the financial impact. And that's why you do it on your own, right? Some, some folks don't, you know, have the ability to compost in their backyard or don't know how to do it. And they just want, they would like to be able to compost, but have it be taken away. You know, so our effort is really attempting to reduce tonnage amounts. And, you know, that's why we're saying, that's why we came up with this pilot program of, we'll, we'll reimburse you your first year as a member. So you don't have to pay for it. It's, it's a new, it would be a free service for the first year. Our hope is that people would continue to, to be part of that program. But, you know, we also don't want to make it mandatory. We want to give residents the option. The other part you asked, you, you, you spoke about was unified barrels and, you know, how that can restrict people with the recycling. You know, similarly, I think we would allow or offer people the ability to buy a second barrel. The first one would be free, of course. And so that if, if you feel the need to have a second barrel, you have the opportunity to get one. But, you know, again, that's actually a lot of the, that's part of the, the effort, I guess, is to encourage recycling. Now, six years ago, it was really valuable to encourage recycling, because recycling was cheaper than waste collection. Today, it's really not. So, you know, the two, it's, we're not really trying to push people to move stuff to recycling for a financial benefit, because it doesn't really exist anymore. But there's still the environmental benefit. So, you know, in part, we would, you know, the idea is to try to reduce tonnage. And having unified barrels would help with that. The other part of it is, you know, the, the wildlife concern. So making sure everybody would have a, you know, a lidded sturdy barrel that, you know, instead of topless barrels that, you know, have bags hanging over and birds, you know, are, are ripping the bags apart and trash is getting everywhere, which leads to wildlife issues. But then mostly, the, the reduction in labor costs for collection would potentially result in a reduction in our contract cost. So again, all of it is, all of it is focused on trying to reduce your trash rate.
But that means one barrel per house, no matter what. If you can fit it in that barrel, you can fit, if you could fit it in that barrel, then it's good for this week. But if you're, let's say, Lizzie cleaning out your garage and you have a barrel plus a bunch of stuff, that won't be picked up, because now we're being limited to one barrel.
Yeah. I mean, there's no, there's no, there's no solution, you know, there's definitely a benefit to the current policy, which is you have unlimited trash amount. But with that policy, you have a trash rate and trash costs that are increasing at 4% each year. So there's definitely not a silver bullet, but, you know, the idea there would, we would give people the opportunity to get a second barrel to try to account for that. You know, it's, it's not perfect, but I hear you on that concern. Okay. Christine, again, if you could just say your name and address.
Hi, sure. Christine Johnson-Lisio, 15 Fox Hill Road. I wanted to thank you for addressing the Lowlands Drainage Project. I think, you know, we all recognize that we've made progress in quite a few of the areas that you've outlined. And, you know, I got to share with all of you in the selectmen, the selectmen and you, Tony, and also the neighbors, the condition of our drainage system. When National Grid came to do those repairs that you referred to, I firsthand saw that you can peel our storm drain back with your hand. There are holes in it. It's like Swiss cheese. And so it is not draining our neighborhood. And this is something that is very apparent. And so the neighborhood, and I know I've spoken with many of the neighborhood, we are very concerned that this system has really deteriorated to the point that when faced with another major coastal event, it will be catastrophic for us, because we are dealing with issues of just rainfall, heavy rainfall, you know, eight to 10 minutes will cause flooding for the homeowners. So I do like what- for, uh, the homeowners. So, uh, I do like what I heard tonight better than at the last meeting where you had pushed up the timeline with a more definite, um, conclusion, hopefully by the end of this year, because to go through another winter flooding season without these repairs is just, um, hard for any of us to imagine with the, now that we've actually seen what the current drainage system looks like below Fox Hill Road. Um, there have been three sections of it that have been repaired over the past year as it has just collapsed under the weight of the soil that National Grid put back in the street when they repaved. And when they pounded that down to, so they could put blacktop down, the entire section's just collapsed. So, um, we, you know, appreciate really moving this to procurement and, um, making the uh, improvements happen with just this section, um, as soon as, as possible. Uh, and though, and we know that it will be disruptive, we welcome, um, the improvement because it's been a long time coming. So, um, and to appreciate you reaching out to the town, uh, the neighborhood to have a meeting with all of us, you know, keeping in mind this is summer and a lot of folks are on vacation, so I don't know how many people can actually attend. Uh, but, you know, we appreciate you reaching out. Um, I did have a question about the funding. I know that at our last town meeting, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars were approved for the projects, uh, for drainage in the Lowlands. Um, I thought there was also some funding left over from the previous vote that we've had. We've had three votes now, so I was just hoping you don't have to provide that tonight, but then when, uh, you do, um, we do a direct issue again, you could kind of break down where the funds have been spent, um, over the last three town meeting votes that we've had. I think we're well over eight hundred thousand dollars now, um, you know, in our efforts to improve drainage here. And so that would be helpful to have a breakdown as to where the funds have gone, um, and, you know, for this project and what remains. Um, and if we do need to go into, you know, the next alternative, which is the outfall, you know, looking at what we need to do in terms of procuring those funds.
Okay, thank you, Christine. I will, um, I'll try to, I'll, I'll put together a, uh, expense report of, of some sort, uh, for the neighborhood meeting. Uh, I don't think that there's any leftover funds from the previous, um, approvals, but I'll, I'll figure, I'll find out and provide that explanation.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Tony.
Yep, you're welcome. Brendan.
Brendan, Veronica Homestead to Summer Street. Uh, questions and a comment. Uh, I did want to respond to of the, one of the other, uh, people on the call about the, um, the composting and using their, um, their wa- waste disposal that it's not exactly free because they do, or you generally, from my understanding, for waste disposal, um, grinders, you have to run the water. So you're paying water sewer bills and you're using electricity, so no matter what, there is a cost, um, with that, um, getting rid of disposal. Um, but for the compost in general, um, I was wondering what the year two cost would be for this Black Earth? Cause you're saying the first year there'd be a reduced price. What is the regular annual price?
So, I think, give me one second, but if we get thirty more residents or households to, to sign up for Black Earth, there'll be a thirty percent reduction in the standard pricing um, that you would currently incur.
The standard pricing now is twenty dollars a month, so it'll be thirty percent off that.
So you'd go down to like fifteen dollars a month if you were paying monthly? Um, the the, so, right now, one mo- a one-year subscription would cost you two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Um, which is about, is way that he sent me this was, was confusing, so hold on, just spare with me for one second.
That would, that would include the twenty dollars per month, Tony, plus the cost of the, um, the bucket.
So the six-month price right now to get picked up weekly is a hundred and fifteen dollars for six months for a weekly pickup. If we got thirty more people to sign up from Nahat, that six-month price would reduce down to ninety dollars per month, uh, ninety dollars for the six months. Or, um, a hundred and eighty dollars for the entire year. So we're gonna re, we wanna, we want to incentivize a full year's membership. Um, and so that would cost two hundred and thirty dollars today. But if thirty, uh, which would be completely reimbursed by the town, but if thirty more, uh, households sign up, everybody, including existing members, would get a thirty percent reduction in their costs. And that annual rate would be, would go down from two thirty to one eighty.
Okay. Um, I guess my next question is, since we're talking about reducing tonnage, um, that will help with the trash rates, you know, is, um, first off, do you, you, as Waste Management said, if you reduce your tr- your trash by X number of tons, we can cut your price. Do we have an idea of a target?
We have, yeah, well, we have put together some conservative estimates on how much, you know, tonnage gets removed per user, per month, I think it was, Mark.
Yes.
Um, and so we have some, we do have some estimates, but it's really, it's conservative, it's ba- and it, and it's unknown because we don't know how many people are gonna sign up. But are, the way that our contract works with Waste Management is we have a base price plus a unit price per ton. So any reduction in tonnage will produce a savings in the total cost, but way, the way that we estimate our total, um, assessment to Waste Management and then use that to estimate, you know, to decide what we need to appropriate and use that to decide how much we need to collect. All that is based off of a three-year average of tonnage in the town in the heart. So, future, future contracts, um, would be based, you know, as more people compost, as tonnage reduces, future contract prices uh, would be reflective of that as well.
All right, so I was kind of wondering if there's any way we could establish like a baseline? And if we, on a monthly basis, are below that baseline tonnage value, that we get a benefit? So that, you know, cause, you know, i- if over time, more people go, you know, are composting, you would think over time that the tonnage would slowly reduce. And I'm just kind of wondering if on a month-to-month basis, if we can gear it so we benefit from whenever we're below the baseline.
Well, uh, let me just add, Tony, that we, the town does provide an abatement to all, um, residents who do compost. What is it? Twenty dollars a month, a year or something, Tony?
Twenty, twenty dollars for your
Yeah, and I, so I, the average, I think, um, um, per week, per household for food waste is about twenty-five pounds per week. Uh, and I, I think that's realistic. Um, I'm by myself from my house or my mother, um, and I put out at least probably thirty pounds a week. Um, of, of food waste. So, you know, thirty pounds, um, uh, times seventeen hundred, um, divided by two thousand is probably about three hundred tons per year.
Right, then multiply that by the unit cost per ton. But the really, you know, then you really even more so get savings if that tonnage reduction potentially results in needing one less truck to do collection. Now you're really seeing some savings. So we did a lot of the analysis, um, in previous meetings. Um, but yeah, Brendan, I, I like where you're going with that is how can we provide, you know, data to the community to show the progress that we're making and how that turns into, um, you know, potential financial savings.
And Brendan, you did mention the, um, the saving, the potential savings on water and sewer. Uh, and that is significant also. We haven't really got a handle on that yet. Uh, but it's something that we can look into a little bit more. You're running your dishwasher, I mean, your garbage disposal. Um, you're turning the water on, the run it, uh, plus our wastewater, uh, treatment, um, costs that live water and sewer is based largely on solids in the waste stream. Um, that could be eliminated also, so there are plenty of savings there also.
All right, and I have one final question. So if, if the percentage of the town that uses Black Earth or whatever composting service, um, if we get up to like fifty or seventy-five percent of the town is using this, is there any way we could get these companies to visit the town twice? You know, like i- uh, um, in a week, cause I guess my concern is if the entire town's getting picked up on the same day, you're gonna have a lot of organic material that's gonna sit around, um, and allow the animals to get at versus there is, you know, kind of how the trash is split up between two different zones during the week. You know, the same type of setup could, with a, uh, composter company.
Yeah, it's possible. Um, would love to have that problem to try to figure that out. Um, but it's definitely possible. You know, they, Black Earth is very, uh, cooperative in our conversation so far, so I don't see why not.
Yeah, the containers, Brendan, are pretty solid. Uh, they lock pretty well. And you can kick them over and push them around and even when they're falling, that lid is tough to get off.
All right, I know the stuffs can be pretty crafty.
Yeah, yeah, well, they haven't gone into mine yet, and I've been doing it for about a year, so, um.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks, Brendan. All right, anyone else?
Okay. Okay, nobody else? So we're gonna go into exec- executive session, uh, Tony?
Yes.
On Coast Guard Housing, um, okay, let's see. I, I moved that the Board of Selectmen adjourned to executive session pursuant to Master General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss pending litigation strategy regarding Town and the Heart versus four Coast Guard housing tenants. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, I, as chair, do believe, do declare that it would have a detrimental effect on a negotiating position of the public body, and we will not return to open meeting. I have a second on that.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I just want to clarify that, you know, the reason it's, it, it's, you know, it may provide, it may be a little confusing to people. It's, it's for Coast Guard housing tenants, but it's, it's still, it's three households. We just wanted to clarify that for anyone, you know, listening in.
Okay, are we ready to vote?
Yeah, go ahead, Josh.
Uh, Josh, I have a mind.
Gee, can't be, all right.
My color, I.
All right, we'll take a quick break. We'll be back after this commercial. Thanks, John.